County Plan and Commission, please come to order. Would you stand for the pledge of the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag...
...of the United States of America...
...to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Starting out by welcoming the county to our meeting.
(laughing).
Since your only one's in the...
(laughing).
Also like to welcome some new members and a new liaison from the county, from the... Whoops.
That's right. Yeah, there you go.
Judy, welcome back.
Thank you. It's great to be back.
Barry, welcome to the commission.
Appreciate it.
With that, the members should have received the draft minutes of April 29, 2019. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
I see none.
I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the draft minutes of April 29, 2019, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None of us. Thank you. The agenda is very late tonight, so we ought to move through here pretty quickly. Jim, you want to start us out with the Board of Appeals case?
Sure.
2019-209?
Yep. Sure. As is our custom and actually code requirement, we have a pending BZA case before the board. It's for a family daycare to be located on Carroll Heights Road. As is required, you guys get the opportunity to comment as a body on any pending special exception or variance case that's going to go before the board. So this is your opportunity to make any comments or recommendations that you may have. The copies of the application for hearing were in your packet. And pretty straightforward, there's a depiction of the house and the fenced-in yard, driveway location and so on, and also kind of a hand-drawn sketch of the floor plan and the different areas that will be dedicated to the daycare, and a schedule as well as in there. So the applicant has apparently operated the daycare from her home outside of the city limits, but they're moving to Carroll Heights and would like to bring the business in with them.
Help me with a little history on some of this. Are they required to put a sign up that day or a daycare provider?
No.
They're not?
There will be a sign posted for the hearing...
Hearing.
...on the property, which has not been posted yet. The date has not been determined. We were anticipating another family daycare application to come in, but it didn't come in in time for you guys to... for it to be on the agenda tonight. So we haven't nailed down the date. I can email that to everyone. But this application was submitted a couple weeks ago, and we did not want them to have to wait until July to have the hearing. So we'll end up having two separate hearings for each... or a separate hearing for each case, assuming the second one is terminated.
Okay. Is there...
They're not required to post any signage for the daycare operation.
Okay. They're reserved through the county?
Through the state, actually.
Through the state?
Right.
Okay. I guess my thought was this: we do this on a pretty regular basis, these daycare. How many daycare residents or daycare businesses are in the city of Tawny Town?
A lot.
(laughing).
I would say roughly a dozen.
A dozen?
The state does not like to really publicize the location of family daycares. So we did contact the state a couple years ago, because you may recall that we were, for a time, subsidizing the cost of the hearing for family daycare businesses. So instead of paying for the full cost of the hearing, they were being charged a flat fee of, I don't recall if it was $50 or something, considerably less than the city was actually spending to hold the hearings. And after a few years of doing that, it became apparent that a number of the family daycares that had gone through the process were no longer in business. And that prompted us to contact the state, I believe it's through the Department of Education, to find out how many were licensed within the city. And we found that over half of the ones that had come through, and the city had subsidized the cost of the hearing for them, that over half of them were no longer in operation. So with that information, the mayor and council reconsidered subsidizing those hearings. So it's back to the applicants paying the full $600 deposit and whatever the cost of the hearing ends up being. So anyhow, that number of about roughly a dozen is what we found when we looked into it a couple years ago. And we haven't had that many cases since then, so I'd say it's probably around that number still.
So other than the state, is there any other agencies, like the 911 Center? Are they aware of where these locations are? I guess my concern is if there's a fire, do they know that this becomes not just a residential, but more of a serious, as far as search and rescue or something like that?
I do not know the answer to that. I can certainly contact the state and inquire as to what's involved in the licensing review. I would like to think that that's part of the review. It would be a sharing of information with the emergency services, but I do not know that for a fact, so I would have to look into that.
I was going to say, I do know, I have a friend who did have a daycare, and I remember her saying that they did have to have very specific fire plans.
I know they do have to have that, but I don't know if...
So it seems like that would kind of carry over into letting somebody know that...
Right. But I don't know if, for example, the Tawny Town Fire Company...
Is advised.
...is advised of that.
Far as I know, we're not.
(laughing).
Okay.
I've never been to one. (laughing).
So it's such a concern to mine, if somebody's responding, they know what they're responding to. That there's more than...
They always do a good job of responding regardless of what it is.
Yeah. So...
But that's something that we probably, if that's not part of the review process or the licensing process through the state, I would consult with the city attorney initially, just recognizing that the state typically doesn't provide a list of family daycares. They may... Basically, if you call the state looking for a list of licensed daycare providers, they will ask you what neighborhood you're looking for, and the age of the children that you're looking to find a placement for, and then they may give you two or three possibilities in that area, but they don't typically release a list of everybody in the jurisdiction. Recognizing that there's some aspect of privacy or to that list, I'd want to check and make sure that providing a list to first responders wouldn't create any kind of an issue for the city. But assuming it doesn't, that's something we probably could start to do, would be, as we have these cases, make sure that word gets passed on to the fire company and, of course, the police department as well.
If it goes to 911, then when they dispatch, they would dispatch it as such?
I know it's hard, though, because the turnover's pretty quick, because they usually... Most people do the daycares while their kids are small, so as their kids kind of grow out of that age, then they stop doing it. So it would be a big turnover.
And that's our hypothesis, I guess, as to why so many of them were no longer in business. And if, for those of you who have been around for a while and maybe attended any of the BZA hearings, more often than not, the applicant does have children of his or her own, because they have to count them into the number of children that they can watch, in terms of that limit through the state. And it's pretty typical that the applicants have children under the school age of their own.
So it would just have to be updated.
So renewal baby once a year.
It would have to be updated pretty often.
Like once a year, renewal or something like that.
And with so many of them not continuing in operation, the assumption is that, once their children are school age, to be in school all day, that then the parent tends to go back to work outside of the home.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments or concerns?
I think it's a good idea that the fire company know that a house has a daycare in it.
I think it's not necessary to fire house or company. It's got to be 911, because you don't know who's responding when they give the alert. It's not like the same person, you know?
Yeah.
So it would have to be 911 Center.
Okay, somebody comes around.
Yeah. Any other comments? Anything from the county? Okay. And my belief that we give some type of recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
You can...
I think that's what the purpose is.
You can recommend favorably, unfavorably, or just no comment one way or the other.
I recommend favorably for the... to let it go through.
Okay. Is there a second?
Any motion? A second?
Okay. Mr. Lewis made the motion? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of getting... all of those in favor of the motion to give a favorable recommendation? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone to pose?
I have to refrain from voting.
Okay. Motion carried. Did you get that? One, two, two, four, five? Two, five, four, one. Yeah, one statement. All right. Okay. I guess the next thing that would be your report, Jim.
Okay. Well, we just covered the first paragraph. So we did the obligatory site plan report for Tawny Town Crossing. I think we've talked about this project a number of times over the months, and I think most folks are well aware of the testimony provided at the Board of Appeals hearing for the project. But nonetheless, the code requires that after they submit their concept plan, that we do a site plan report. So pretty boilerplate stuff, but water and sewer lines are already contiguous to the property. They have a couple options there. It's in West Baltimore Street, it's in Westview, also in Harney... to some extent, up Harney Road. So serving the property's not a problem. We have capacity in our water allocation resolution that we pass every... that the mayor and council pass every month. We have capacity for the project there. The developers have essentially already... they've already been awarded the tax credits they were seeking, and as part of that program, they do not seek any other discounts, they don't receive any other subsidies beyond that initial tax credit award that helps finance construction of the project. So basically, it's a little under four acres altogether. Actually, it might be a little bit over. 1.98 and 2.09, so yeah, a little bit over four acres, divided by Westview Drive. CLSI is the engineer. We've got three separate property owners, but then ultimately, there will be one owning entity for all the parcels when the site plan is approved. So we may have some... there may be some timing issues. For those of you who have been around for a while, you may recall the Dollar General Site Plan, where they were doing a lot consolidation, and they were the contract purchaser from the state highway-owned parcels. And once the plan was approved, we had to sort of orchestrate the timing of all of that, including the sale of the property with the consolidation plan, and then the site plan recordation. Well, not really recordation, but moving through the process at the county. So we may have a similar timing issue with this one, but we're months away from that. So not really a whole lot of new ground to cover on that one. They do hope to have a preliminary site plan within the next two months. I think they were shooting for 60 to 90 days after the concept was approved. So optimistically, June, more likely, probably July.
Now, can they tear the house down anytime?
Yes.
Because they already gave the people notice, I know that.
Right. The property owner would have to apply at this point, but yes, they could apply for a demolition permit whenever they want to. I would imagine that they probably will go month to month with their tenants, as long as their tenants are willing to stay there, and probably derive some more income out of the property before the sale.
They've already gave them 30-day notice.
Okay.
But 30 days on an eviction is more like two and a half months.
So, and that's their choice. If they want to have the property vacated and then just have it sit unoccupied while the site plan is being reviewed, that's certainly their prerogative. But yeah, there's nothing that stops them from pursuing a demolition permit.
To get the demolition permit, is that something you need to sign off on too, besides the county?
Right. We would generally, before you can get any type building permit...
Any permit?
And a demolition permit goes through the same... just basically an abbreviated version of getting a building permit. You're required to have a city zoning certificate before you can apply for a building permit. So the same process would be in place. But the fact that it's in the Old Town District doesn't offer any protection or anything like that against demolition.
I have a comment then, Jim.
Okay. Go ahead, George. Go.
I think the fartherest apartments in Building Number 10 be assigned the closest parking spaces in the parking lot, because...
But that's independent.
I don't care if it is the independent.
It's an independent place, just like Carol Vista is independent.
I'm thinking of the welfare of the people that live there.
Hey, I got a lot of problems with what's going on there, but...
I don't think that's...
Those people that live the furthest in Apartment 10 shouldn't have to hunt a parking spot when they come in with their groceries and find a spot way back somewhere, because you're not always going to get those closest spots up there.
I've got one down here that people live at the street, and they're at the furthest parking spot. And I bought an acre way back, so they have parking.
I still think that...
You can't control that.
I think we should.
Well, I think it's out of our scope. I think that's up for the agents that's doing the rental. And they said they would identify parking spots accordingly to the units.
I think we should insist.
Well, maybe not insist, but maybe we should mention it like we did with the exit out of the townhouses. Maybe make it as a suggestion, and maybe they'll follow through.
I think we should make a suggestion.
Okay. They'll be before us.
Right.
And we'll have that opportunity.
Yep. You've got to give...
It's not that I disagree with you.
You've got to think about these people that have to live in those apartments.
I don't disagree with you, but yeah.
But they also know going in that that's where their apartment is.
Right. And besides that, they're not going to be living there most likely all their life. Those apartments will change hands.
Right. Good for a year.
Right. So, not that I disagree with you.
There's not enough parking, so they're going to have to move the kit parking somewhere anyway.
You can disagree, but I agree.
I didn't say I disagree. I didn't disagree.
Oh, okay.
You understood that? I do not disagree with you. I want you to be able to get to your car and carry your groceries without dropping the milk. With that, Jim, let's...
Okay. And that is certainly a suggestion that we can put forward with the developer. And just, I don't have... we don't have the site plan up on the board, but if you recall, there's a... close to the apartments, the parking area close to the apartment building had a small stormwater facility between the building and the parking area. And I don't know if this is a realistic solution or compromise, but I wonder if the idea of having sort of flipping that so that the stormwater basin might be, and I don't know if it's going to be a microbioretention facility like we have out at Sheetz, where it's just the kind of mulched, depressed area.
You've got to watch, some of that land is wet, very wet.
But I just wonder if maybe putting that as kind of a flip-flopping the parking and that stormwater basin, if there might be an opportunity to kind of have the parking sort of loop around the stormwater and push it closer to the apartment building. You know, I don't know the topography or anything, but it might be a suggestion that we can float with the developer and see if they can take a look at it, see if it's feasible.
Maybe it's...
And it would push the parking a little bit closer to the building than it was on the concept.
Would it be proper for you to make contact with the engineers so that they don't go ahead and spend all the time and money, and then come back and hear it from us afterwards?
I can certainly float the idea...
Okay.
...with them before they get too far into their engineering. So, and it may not... the lay of the land or whatever may not make that possible, but...
Right.
None of that ground is wetter than the ground between Westview and 140. That's a wettest ground I can find.
Yes, and I got that.
You know as good as anybody where that wet spot is, don't you?
Exactly.
Yep.
Jim, continue, please.
All righty. So if there's nothing else on Tawny Town Crossing, I wanted to let you know that there has been some discussion at the staff level and with the mayor, actually, the outgoing mayor and also our new mayor, about moving forward with some code revisions as far as the permitted uses in commercial districts. We had some discussions some time back for the former Sheetz site when they were initially denied the... when the liquor store application was initially denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the property owner was going to put a business in there that was considered less than desirable by many in the town. And the prevailing opinion within the city seemed to be, I thought we prohibited that kind of use, and that had never been done. So the idea of revisiting some, shall we say, polarizing uses that either could be made more clear in the code, or some uses that the code is silent on, that kind of put me as the zoning administrator in a difficult situation when somebody calls and proposes one of these businesses that is really not similar to something on the permitted uses list, but is considered by many to be a less than desirable business. There have been situations where I've told people that, you know, I can't approve that, it's not listed in that zoning district, and there's nothing similar. And for the most part, the people have kind of accepted it and gone away. Sooner or later, somebody's going to challenge that and say, and remind us that if it's a lawful business in the state, it has to be permitted someplace. There certainly are exceptions if something is like, you know, if there are air quality aspects and things like that, that, you know, that our area can't accommodate. But as far as the general uses, there are some things that we're missing that we have had proposals for, and things like adult-themed businesses. Tattoo parlors is another one that our code is silent on some years ago.
Well, let me ask you this. I don't mean to interrupt, but like even now, and I feel like, because it was in the in-mail that I got, tattoo parlors to me are a completely different thing than they were 20 years ago. Like, they're very trendy, they can be very nice. Like, I'm afraid we're going to start putting all of these little shops and stuff in, and then somebody's going to be like, "Well, I don't really want a gun shop in town either." Or, "I don't want a place where you can buy cigarettes." So I feel like there's a really fine line.
And the point is, the code is kind of silent on those two, just by way of example.
Right.
And so if somebody did, and for a while, I was getting fairly regular calls from people wanting to open a tattoo parlor. And, you know, I have no... nothing against tattoos, but knowing our downtown rents as compared to, you know, say, rent out at the shopping center or the general business district, I wonder if, you know, limiting that to certain districts, like maybe making it a special exception downtown, but a permitted use in general business, might make it more likely that a better-funded business, maybe of a different caliber than somebody who's going to come in, you know, looking for the cheapest rent they can find, you know, may be a better result for the city. So just some things like that. And I'm, again, I'm not suggesting that they not be allowed, but it'd be something we should think about, where would be the best place for them, and whether it should be allowed as just a simple permitted use, or if it should be a special exception use. And the same sort of thing with an adult-themed business.
Sensations Club. Sensations Club.
Well, whether it be that type of a venue or a video novelty store, which is what the owner of the former Sheetz site was going to supposedly open up.
Right.
But there was a lot of negative response to the idea of that locating downtown.
So is Jay and the city council going to work on that? And then bring it back?
So the idea would be to possibly introduce something next month, and it would, of course, then come back for comment. But if anybody has suggestions or can think of instances where we've had questions as to whether something would fit or not. And I don't know if, you know, folks have spoken to any of the commission members about, you know, "Oh, I was thinking about bringing this business or that business." I know you guys hear stuff out in the community. So if you have any suggestions or have stumbled across anything in the code when you've been reviewing for some other issue that we could tidy up while we're in there, we certainly would appreciate any suggestions or input you might have as we go through and try to identify the handful of things that we want to update. So, but again, that, hopefully, we will have a draft ordinance in the next month or so.
While you're on that same subject, I happened to notice on Broad Street that there was a lot of lumber stacked up there, and I found out today that that's the business that went in there.
It's not all on them either. They're putting it on other people.
That's right. Suppose one of those pallets fall over.
Excuse me, guys. There's a lot of lumber piled up there, and there's a business operating in there that as if I went by today, I actually went by it three times, and it was very quiet and looked like a neat operation. But I remember when a plumbing outfit wanted to go in there, and it came before us as an issue as far as manufacturing being in that area. Now, I understand they're making pallets. Now, that's manufacturing. Is that correct? Why didn't that come back to us? I mean, I don't see anything wrong with what's there. I mean, I haven't heard any complaints.
They've got a lot of their sawdust piled outside, and it should be put in a container.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that's some of the things we need to look about, but I wasn't aware of that business. And does that business have a name?
I...
They work with a hickory shell outfit, I know.
I mean, they didn't come before you, Jim?
No. I was aware of the plumbing company.
Oh, my goodness. Well, this is a big outfit.
I heard this was going on now for the past six months.
Wait, what?
They pile these things 16, 12, and 16 high.
Now, I don't know that they haven't sublet part of the building. I'm guessing that's what they've done out there.
It's a big operation.
Sublet, that's...
It's a big, right. Yeah. Not only that, but I saw a pallet fell over the other day.
It was now on somebody else.
Well, Jim, if you'd look into it, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
I obviously don't happen on that road very often.
Well, I didn't. As I said, I was driving down, driving out of town, I glanced up, and there was all this lumber. I said, "Somebody's building something in there."
Okay. Yeah, I didn't see that.
The code revision did pass that allowed the industrial-type uses in the general business district, where we expanded it from...
Assembly, but not manufacturing. Well, I don't think we did that. I thought that was the issue, they couldn't manufacture anything.
I think we... I think we allowed that because EVACCO was one of the drivers for that revision, and it was a happy timing coincidence that we had the plumber who... Now, the first plumber ended up moving into the former Maryland Society of Accountants building.
Right.
But they were looking at that Broad Street building as well. But they were looking at that Broad Street building as well. But they decided to go for the accountants building because they weren't confident that the other stuff would happen quickly enough, which it turned out that that actually did happen pretty quickly. But I think that we included manufacturing so that it would cover EVAPCO and the new building that was put up a couple of years ago.
Okay.
I don't know if this code is.
Well, the plumbing company never bought that building, I don't think.
No, because what's his name from Union Bridge?
Lou, Lou Jordan.
Yeah, Lou, Lou Jordan.
Lou Jordan.
The plumbing company that originally wanted, well, the second one that wanted to go in there, their trucks are sitting there on that open lot. Did you see them?
Right, a second company did move in, a second plumbing, plumbing company did move in.
They're using something there because their trucks are there. But they're on the, on the upper side.
A plumber doesn't make sawdust.
No, that's not the plumber's work. But the plumber's also using that lot.
But did the plumbers buy that, buy the building, or did they just print it?
I don't know who, once Lou Jordan died, I kind of lost.
So did I, because it filled, filled through the cracks, I guess.
He was keeping me up on it, and then all of a sudden, boom.
But if you can look, check that out and get back to us by next, for next month's meeting, I appreciate it.
It's big business.
Yeah, it looks good.
Well, they only make one thing there in lumber.
Pallets.
Pallets.
Okay.
It's the only thing they're making.
But they're getting truckloads of.
Oh man, big ones.
If they're pounding them that high and they're falling over like that, that starts to cause some.
Well, I saw some slabs like, and then I saw the, the sawdust, yes.
They have heavy stuff there that they're working with.
It is outside.
I'm gonna have to drive by.
You need to ride up, you'd be surprised.
All right. Jim, I think I interrupted you, so we can go ahead. You brought the subject up.
Well, we will look into that.
They're actually getting dirtier and dirtier and dirtier. It was really good.
Okay, we're still back on your report, or do we finish your report?
No, he's looking up that code.
I was just totally checking the, uh.
Oh, okay.
I think we got, we got rid of the, limited to within the building again because of trying to accommodate EVAPCO, knowing that they had to have their, their storage yard. But we did require, we did have a screening requirement though, if they were doing outdoor storage, so that's something that would apply at the Broad Street building if.
It's, it's coming back for me, because we talked about, we didn't want to do spot, we didn't want to do spot zoning changing and all that, so, gotcha.
Okay.
We go back years on some of this stuff.
Okay, so as far as the, the code update, hopefully we'll have some, a draft introduced and before you for next month's meeting. And then segue to the next bit there. The next regular meeting conflicts with the Maryland Municipal League Summer Convention. Myself and city attorney will both be attending the convention.
You're part of this.
I know, I gotta be there too.
So is it June the 24th?
Yeah.
So while certainly you can meet, there won't be much in the way of staff support. I mean, we can have, we'll have, we can have somebody to operate the camera and the recorder and take, take the minutes, but.
That's not, that's not, save we did.
So we can move up to the 17th or July 1st?
Or do you want to see if, how much it comes in next month?
Well.
If we have it the 1st.
What do you think's going to be, be forced? We would like to hear the results about this Broad Street stuff before two months away, but.
Yeah, that would be good.
Well, I mean, we can, we can push it a week either way.
What, what does shoot, anybody, the 17th or July 1st? July 1st is the, is July 4th week, a holiday week, if anybody's.
I think it's 17th.
Who's the 17th?
17th?
Yeah.
June 17th?
That's a month from now, really.
Okay, June 17th, shoot, Jim?
Okay.
Okay, that's what we got. June 17th. Okay. Suit you, Jim.
What's the 17th, is it on Monday too?
It sure is.
Yeah.
It's the day after Father's Day.
I go out to eat every other night, so.
Good, okay. County, you got that?
I can't wait.
Oh, I'll be, oh, can I make it?
If you want to.
June 17th is, that usually comes at the end. That usually comes at the end, but.
That was it for me.
Okay. What about the active projects? Any more you want to hit on, any of those others? When's George back here going to move that fence and finish that project?
I'll follow up with him. I gave him a friendly reminder a couple of weeks ago, but I will push on that again.
Anything on the tannery barn?
Actually, there, there is a bit of news there. And we are trying to work through this with the developer. Apparently, the pavilion that was erected, at, at least at this point, does not have gutters and downspouts. So water is being shed and running, of course, downhill to the Farley property next door. And they've had some damage as a result of, of, I guess, you know, higher water table. And so we're, we're trying to work through that with, basically the county's been involved with both resource management for grading and erosion sediment control questions, and also the permits and inspections office with regard to the structure itself. And the, at this point, the proposed solution is simply going to be, you know, gutters and downspouts, and then extending the runoff from, from the roof of the pavilion to the rear of the property where it'll flow down in a swale and miss the developed part of the property downgrade of them, and then go right into the tributary for Piney Creek that's at the bottom of the hill. I don't know at this point if the developer is agreeable to that solution or not. So that's, I guess, where we are with the tannery barn. So they, they did, you know, pull their permits to convert things to commercial and everything like that, and they're working through that. But there have been some related issues that we're trying to work through with, with the developer and the county.
But they don't have the UNO yet, right?
No. No, they don't.
They got a runoff pond or anything back there? Nothing?
No.
I built a four little old unit, and I had to put a runoff pond, no.
And the, what we need to look a little closer at is, you may recall their site plan disturbed just under 5,000 square feet.
Yep, yep.
So that they weren't obligated to do stormwater management. And the pavilion that was added at the very end of the project, at the very end of the site plan process, was supposedly over an existing patio, so over already existing impervious area. And we're, we're hearing from others that the patio was not, was not existing when they acquired the property, so that is a question mark for us. So we have some things to look into, and also to make sure that there's not more impervious than was on the site plan at this point, so. So it's a, a number of things going on with that one. And, you know, I'm sure we'll come to a, a resolution that works for the adjacent property owner, but that may, may take some persuading.
He was liking them. He was liking them.
Well, I don't think he dislikes them.
And he was, I mean, he was supportive of the project.
Yes. And I guess you would have too, if you, if they would have came down to talk to you.
Yeah, remember me? Remember me a long time ago when they built Wayne's Chevrolet? I was out there pushing the water away from me.
All right, well, thanks for updating on that, Jim.
Oh, Lord.
Okay, Jay didn't have anything for us, right?
No.
Clara, it's your turn.
I just have a couple of updates and a little introduction. This is Anno, she has been with our planning department since January?
January.
So she is just visiting some of the municipalities with me, getting a little familiar.
Well, welcome to Tawny Town.
She might be with me again next month, we'll see. So just a couple of updates, our light plan, I know it's been in the works for a while, we're taking it to planning commission next week for acceptance, and we'll begin a 60-day review. And then I'll send a draft copy to Jim, or the accepted copy to Jim for any planning commission or staff comments for a good, for approval by planning commission. And I'll send it to the state to do a 60-day review, or I mean, a clear and house review. The water and sewer master plan was accepted by MDE in mid-April, and I think they have, is it 90 days, Jim?
I believe so.
I think it's 90 days. So we haven't gotten any comments from them yet, so we'll probably hear from them just about at 90 days. And then staff has a few work sessions coming up with the county commissioners in July, the beginning of July, I think, for the conference zoning. This is for the, the map amendment portion. They've already accepted and gone through work sessions for the test, so after this map amendment portion, most likely the public hearing, and then the commercial industrial employment campus portion, the conference zoning will be in effect, so. That's the latest news on that? That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Okay, other business? George, you have it?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
No?
Two things. How's the bridge coming? What's happening with the bridge?
It is out to bid. We have some questions from bidders to respond to in the next couple of days that pertain to the bridge, but I, I do not remem, I don't recall what the, what the deadline for bid submittals is, but it is, it is this month.
We are still going to get the bridge out, right?
Yeah, yeah, that is, I mean, it's, the, the plan is developed, has been approved for both the stormwater retrofit project and the bridge itself. It's, it's out to bid through the county right now. And the city will be involved in, in discussions before the bid is awarded because the, the county process does, does give the opportunity that if, let's see, depending upon how the bid is weighted, that if, if for example, the stormwater pond, there's a low bidder that, you know, undercuts everybody else on the stormwater pond, but is much higher on the bridge portion, that we, we have the opportunity for the county to not accept that bid, just because it would be the cheapest for them while the most expensive for the city. So we do still have to finalize the, the memorandum, memorandum of agreement with the county that pertains to how we will reimburse the county for contract invoices and things of that nature. It's gone back and forth between us and the county and respective engineers, but it hasn't gone to the attorneys yet. So we do need to have that in place within the next few weeks, hopefully. So that's probably an item that will be on the mayor and council's agenda next month because it will be in agreement that they'll have to approve and the mayor will have to sign. So, so, but the bridge is, is moving along, so it, it is happening.
One other question. Are we liable, when you give out a permit for a license for a business to open up, are we liable for not enough lighting if someone would get hurt or anything? No lighting, put it that way.
No, usually when we do a zoning certificate, for the last several years, we have been putting the new business on there with tenant fit out. And the tenant fit out is a building permit that they pull at the county, and that's where they go through and make sure that the space is up to, up to codes as, as applicable. I don't know specifically if lighting is, is one of the things that's in there, but they, they look at the basic floor layout and, you know, counter height, service counter height and things of that nature. And I think there's some, certainly there are some variables. And for a while, the county was, was requiring the tenant fit out permit for basically any, any business that opened up. And recently, I've been informed by someone I sent to the county that they went to the county and the county told them, basically, why are you here if you're not, you know, changing any walls or doors or anything like that? So I'm not sure if the pendulum's swinging back away from that, but.
Using a car's headlights for people to see to walk away is tough.
Okay, what, is there a specific site that?
There's no, there's no dust that dawns or nothing. There's snowballs there.
Oh, okay.
You talking about darkening?
Yeah.
Well, because they're not using that main building, so they're not turning on any of that outside lighting anymore, so the snowball.
They got a little light sitting on the ground, a little spotlight, and they're using car lights after it gets dark. And let me tell you, they are busy. They got a good business. That lot is full, mine is sometimes full, and also, I don't know what's on the bank lot.
Had to get a permit from you then, Jim, right?
Yeah, but that, that was a simple zoning certificate because the last use of that building was a snowball stand.
Okay.
So that's, you know, there were no site changes requested or anything. To do that, basically, it's just a different tenant moving into the same space for the same use. So there's no real.
There's some safety issues there, even with the blacktop, the parking area with holes, and people can turn their ankles and stuff like that. I mean, there should be a check and bounce there somewhere that, over a period of time, if a new, a new.
Well, they brought the people away from, they're coming straight to the road now, and they're bringing them all the way across the front of the building. And it's usually three people wide in the line. It's a long line. It's nothing to wait, I'll bet you an hour. And they got a good business. Can't hate them for a good business.
When it's hot, snowballs are in.
That's all I got.
Look like we're putting a lot on Jim for a month.
I, I'm not sure if that's something that would really be under our purview or not.
If it's not, fine. It's fine.
I'm thinking kind of like when there's.
I'm satisfied with.
Yeah. Like when there's a pothole at the shopping center.
Right.
And people call and complain to the city that there's a pothole at the shopping center. It's not a public street, it's a private parking lot, and it's kind of on them to maintain it, you know, to a safe condition. I think the property where the snowball stand is, is a little different situation because it seems to be, I mean, it's, it's on the market, so they're, I'm sure, unlikely to spend money to make improvements to the property with the thought that ultimately it will be sold, and the building that's on there will probably be demolished, and the snowball stand probably, you know, hauled away. So I, I wouldn't anticipate there being much interest in making improvements to the parking lot or, or providing lighting or something like that. I mean, lighting certainly would be a, a desirable thing to have, and, you know, I can, I can certainly.
Some of my extra lights on.
I can certainly contact them and, and.
If they put the one pole light there over the top of it, I mean, but.
And, yeah, and let them know that the lack of lighting has been called to our attention and suggests that they take care of that problem. But I don't think, I don't think code-wise, there's something specific that, you know, we can compel them to do.
I'm just making sure we're not liable anyway.
We can, we can always ask, we can always suggest, but I don't know if we can force.
Jim? Okay. Not hearing anything else, and no one other than the county? I'll entertain, I'm hushing for a German.
He needs a little.
In a second. All those in favor?
Bye.
opposed?